Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council Work Meeting. Today is November the third, 2025. And the time is six thirty-one. This meeting has been duly advertised in City newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call please, Mayor Per. Kamala?
Here.
Kamona?
Present.
Barclay?
Present.
Oldeste?
Present.
Battis?
Present.
Swetson?
Here.
Thomas?
Present.
All the tenants. May I have approval of previous minutes? May I have a motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call? For all in favor?
Aye.
Next we have agenda review, Mayor Per.
Personal agenda is Resolution 196, authorizing the shared services between the county and the city for highway digital message boards and electronic speed feedback signs.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 197, authorizing a tax collector to participate in electronic tax sale for the tax sale for 2025.
Any questions? CNN?
Resolution 198, authorizing the tax collector to charge a notice fee for electronic tax sale for the tax year 2025.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 199, authorizing the tax collector to cancel tax and sewer delinquencies of less than $10.
Any questions? CNN?
Resolution 200, authorizing imposition of a penalty on tax delinquencies in excess of $10,000.06.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 201, authorizing the billing of special charges to property owners for work perform or neglected properties.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 202, authorizing the application of the NJBPU Urban Heat Island Mitigation Grant.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 203, authorizing-- well, before I read, I want to make note that it should be $57,000 for this resolution. So it should read as endorsing proposed Urban Enterprise Zone Assistant Fund Project entitled Main and Washington Avenue Demolition Project, Phase Two, in the amount of $57,000. In the body of it, it says not to exceed $60,000. That also changes to state $57,000.
So no? Resolution? Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 204, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement for Key Chad Real Estate Development LLC regarding the expanded city area redevelopment plan, Block 102, Lots 5, 12, 26, 27, 28, 10, and 24, and the execution of the purchase and sale agreement of Block 102, Lots 10, and 24.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 205, authorizing the lease and installation of holiday decorations from Christmas Decor, New Jersey.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 206, authorizing renewal of SDL Management Software License.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 207, authorizing renewal of forerunner software license.
Any questions, council? CNN?
This is an add-on. Resolution 208, authorizing personnel transaction in the city for November 2025.
Any questions, council? CNN? Let's review the bill list. May I have a seat, Mr. Bell? Do you need anyone?
Giddy, giddy. Okay, so before you-- you have the check register, which I'll go through that one first. And it says, "Check register by check date." And that is like about three pages, but it's only really one page that has all the information. So I'm going to start with the projects that are on the roll right now and we're moving on. And so therefore, as we get ready in a few months to close these out, and one is for the Hughes Electric. That's the bike path. That's the Kaden Mallon. West Bay, that is for the three parks, Matty, Preston, and Leeds. That payment is in the amount of $181,498.31. That's on that page. And now we go on to the second report. It says, "Purchase order listing live under." So on the first page, first item up on the top is for McCarthy Tire. It's $2,559.60. We go to second page two. We're looking at the-- probably the fifth or sixth line down. This is the shared service agreement with the Atlantic City Municipal Court. That's $34,000. If we go on to-- we go on to page four. We have a purchase order issued to Grand Turk Equipment Company. That's for $38,000. And that's to repair and service the sewer truck, which is needed. Also, there was an emergency repair. If you look down towards the middle of the page, lot by yet, construction, $9,700.
Ms. Nunez, which street was that?
Can't remember the name of the street now. Can you just let me know? Page five. Most of the expenses on here are medical reimbursements, but you also see trash reimbursement for the mini grid, $53,097.17. The orchids, $40,988.07. If we move on to page six, you'll see more trash reimbursements. For Sasa Press Run, $23,211.38. Skyline Condominiums, $28,420.58. Okay, bottom of page seven. Bottom of page seven is Greeman Pendrinsen, Inc. That's GPI. And these are projects that are also ongoing. Yes.
On the previous page, we referenced several of the trash reimbursement for condominiums. Are we paying them? Are we reimbursing them for only one pickup of wheat by a citizen?
I'm right now just reimbursing because some of them have even put for electric and snow removal. They're just getting it for your trash. But Ms. Crosby, if you have to ask them. So that's okay.
So very quickly, without going into anything that may lead to executive session matters. So there's something called the Municipal Services Act, which requires the city to treat condominiums the same way they would treat private customers. Not even better, not to give them a special treatment, but to give them the same treatment. And there were some concerns whether or not there were duplicate services being afforded to some of the condominiums. We finally narrowed it down. We've had some meetings. And we know who ACUA from whom they are picking up. And these particular condominiums, they are not. So these are the reimbursements that are being done today are from 2023, I believe.
Yes.
Not 2024. There are some issues relative to how many days a week, which we're working on. They're only entitled to get whatever it is that residents or homeowners are getting. So we're working on developing a new agreement. The agreement is 20 years old. That's currently in existence. And Ms. Nunez will be working with her team to go through to reduce the amounts for 2024 relative to snow and lighting, things they're not entitled to. I know that Mr. Law spoke with ACUA about the number of days because it's ACUA who has some-- not so much them, but some of the other locations listed multiple days a week, some two, some three. So we're kind of working on all that now. But because of the delinquency of the 2023 matters and we were receiving communications that we had to pay that. So we kind of hold everything at bay and then figure out the rest.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the bill list? Thank you. Any questions? Anyone? Thank you, Ms. Nunez.
Counsel, do you have anything? For the discussion? Nothing? May I have a motion to close the work session?
Motion.
Okay. Last thing? Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council meeting. Today is November the third, 2025. And the time is six forty-three. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Please stand for invocation. Have flags to do. We're going to have a moment of silence I pledge allegiance--
To the flag of the United States of America and its republic, the people which stands in my nation, under God, in the universal and every team and justice of all.
Thank you. Glasses under the table. Roll call, please. Kamala? Kamona?
Present.
Barclay?
Present.
Oldeste?
Present.
Battis?
Present.
Swetson?
Tom? Present.
All the tenants. May I have a motion to dispense previous minutes?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Mayor, have any accommodations, appropriations?
I have none, but you might consider heading.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Business administrator, council. Thank you, guys, for giving us this opportunity. We are going to offer our pitting service to our recruits that just graduated Friday after a grueling academy. Now they're going to earn the right from going from recruit to firefighter. They're still going to be probationary because they're still calling pros. But they're going to be officially pinned as a firefighter tonight. Congratulations to firefighter Fluke. And firefighter Jackson. So just so you guys know, these three recruits just are newest members of our department. Thank you, guys, for your continued support. Appreciate everything you guys have done for our department. And we want to congratulate the recruits for their commitment to our department. And again, what I've mentioned to them at their graduation is I want them to be committed to serving our community. If they stay committed to serving our community, they'll become the best firefighters in the Pleasantville City. So at this time, I want to-- you guys can bring up whoever is going to pick you guys.
Chief. That's that.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
Do you like bringing your patient?
Yes.
Firefighter.
Whoa. Audience, please, you're running. I can't hold my cut in that.
Take one for doctor, too.
Thank you. Congratulations. I'd like to say congratulations. Welcome to the-- Now, the academy went really fast. Did you guys like that, do you?
Yeah. It got fast for a long days.
Congratulations. I have a bunch of cheeks left. Congratulations. Welcome to the Pleasantville family.
Appreciate it.
I didn't even recognize him.
Trying to keep it that way. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next, we have former student, Mr. Holliday.
Does he miss us?
Yes. You don't have to, but--
I kind of like it. Well, good evening, mayor, council. My name is Dante Holliday. Pleasantville resident, parent, and business owner. I'm here regarding the intersection at New Road and Woodland Avenue. We are now approaching 500 signatures from residents, workers, and families urging action. In January alone, five crashes occurred at this intersection. And since January, there have been 13 reported accidents. And we all know that doesn't count the near misses and the unreported incidents people have experienced every week. This isn't just data. It's real lives. One woman who was T-bone there shared her testimony publicly. She ended up in the ICU with broken ribs, a lacerated kidney, and severe PTSD. That's the cost of human inaction. I want to be clear. I understand this is a county road. The city brought it to me. And the decision ultimately goes through them. And I've already submitted a formal letter to the county to address the issue. And the community is standing behind that request. But we are here tonight because we know the county moves faster when our city stands with us. So we are asking for your continued support and partnership in urging them to take action. We are respectfully requesting a traffic signal or an always stop, proper crosswalks, AT8 ramps, and lighting. And while that proceeds-- that process moves, animal safety steps like fresh striping, clear signage, and speed monitoring would help. We truly appreciate the council members who have already engaged and supported this effort. We are not here to criticize. We're here to collaborate and protect our community before another life is changed forever. Thank you for your time and your service to Pleasantville. I appreciate you guys. I also prepared a docket for you guys to pass around. And you guys can kind of see a little bit of the carnage that has taken place there in the past nine months. Personally, myself, that woman who was T-bone-- I don't know if you guys know, but I'm the CEO of Kingdom Academy. And we are preschool in the area. And, you know, we have had people crash into our building.
Can you tell them what street? What's that?
It's New Road and Woodland Avenue.
And they're waiting in a house of men every day.
Yeah, it's like right with the expressway off of there. And I'm sure you guys have experienced problems there. We've had-- we've had experience of hit and run. A person crashed into our building during school hours and not school hours, damaging our building. That person was not required. The woman who was T-boned, I actually had to help her out of her car because I was with the students and I heard the accident outside. And people were rushing over. I saw something going on. And I had to help this woman out of her car. She was dripping blood. She was, you know, asking me to help-- find her cell phone so she could call her children. And, you know, you experience things like that all the time there. You know, it kind of gets to you because you have children. And we have children there every day. And there's a park right across the street on Woodland. As of recently, Billows next door, good friends of ours, they actually experienced the same thing. They have a big gaping hole now in their fences from a recent accident. And we've experienced parking lot damage, all types of things. So, you know, I just hope you guys can, you know, hear me out. And, you know, you guys can pass around the docket and things like that. But we do have a petition going around. It's nearing 500 signatures. You know, I'm sure it'll probably blow up after this goes up. But, you know, I really appreciate you guys hearing me out. But it's a really serious issue. And something needs to happen before more people get hurt. And it could be someone close to you. So--
Dante, can you give Mayor Per the passage, please?
And is your number? Is it number?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
First, I want to thank you for your presentation, which I find to be very thorough and professional. But just to correct you, Route 9 on New Road is a state road, not a county road. I would also recommend that you send your information to the State Department of Transportation. But the county will also-- the county is still a good place because they have a lot of influence. And certainly, I personally want to support your effort in whatever way we can here. Encourage my colleagues here on council to do what we can to improve the safety of that intersection. We understand what the problem is. It's that fast ramp off of Route 9. It's part of the problem.
So I wanted to join my colleague to thank you because I experienced that intersection myself. And the money is uncontrollable. It's everybody fighting for themselves. The last accident he described, there was a black vehicle when the Millows fence split over. So I'm going to recruit myself to join you in any way that we can work together to push the message farther.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Barclay. And thank you, Ms. Thomas, for the invitation. It's weird because I didn't think that-- I always knew it was a problem because people tell me over the years, the past 10 years of all of this happening. But, you know, I always said I was going to have a big petition. And then I made a physical one. And I started passing it out. And, you know, that kind of takes a while. And I kind of like left it alone. And then accidents kept happening, another one, another one. And the people kept saying, "So what's up with that petition again?" And I didn't think I would have to, like, come and even do this. But it's affecting a lot of people around us. And it's just really not safe. So I really appreciate you guys hearing me out and joining the fight for public safety in our area.
Mayor Dante, thank you. Dante, thank you for coming. Because years ago, when I was on City Council, we tried twice to have a street light put there, you know, stop sign or anything there that would slow traffic. And we were just never able to get it because they said it was too close in proximity to the one that's there already. So now with you coming as a resident, with, you know, the signatures and everything else, I'm trying again. And as Councilman Battis said, reaching out to the state that should make a big, big difference because they have the man-made sidewalk. We tried to get them to do sidewalks and everything there for so long. It just hasn't been attended. So this is-- I thank you for coming forward with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. I appreciate it. And, you know, you supporting anything Kingdom Academy has done as far as our community goes and things like that, I really appreciate that as well. We're just trying to help people any way we can. And this is major because-- I don't know if you guys noticed, even across the park on Woodland, that fence is kind of like damaged as well. So like, you know, I had an insurance person come out recently, an auditor, and he was like, "This whole block is like destroyed." Literally, from Billows to the park, to your parking lot, like, what's going on here? He was afraid they would cross the street. And he was-- I didn't even tell him what had happened yet because, you know, we're kind of figuring out, you know, how we're going to get those things fixed. So I really appreciate it.
Once again, we appreciate you coming here. I have your phone number. I'm not going to get ahold of you. But if we have any further questions, then we'll reach out to you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Good night. May I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Per.
Resolution 196, authorizing the shared services to briefing between the county and the city for highway message, digital message boards, and electronic speed feedback signs.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldeste?
Yes.
Battis?
Yes.
Swetson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 197, authorizing the tax collector to participate in electronic tax sale for 2025.
May I have a motion? May I have a second? Roll call.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldeste?
Yes.
Battis?
Yes.
Swetson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 198, authorizing the tax collector to charge a notice fee for electronic tax sale for 2025.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second? Roll call.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldeste?
Yes.
Battis?
Yes.
Swetson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 199, authorizing the tax collector to cancel tax and sewer delinquencies of less than $10.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldeste?
Yes.
Battis?
Yes.
Swetson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 200, authorizing imposition of a penalty on tax delinquencies in excess of $10,000.06.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldeste?
Yes.
Battis?
Yes.
Swetson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 201, authorizing the billing of special charges to property owners for work perform or neglected properties.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Oldeste?
Yes.
Battis?
Yes.
Swetson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 202, authorizing the application for the NJBPU Urban Heat Island Mitigation Grant.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala.
Yes.
Kamala.
Yes.
Bartclay.
Yes.
Oldeste.
Yes.
Bettis.
Yes.
Swetson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 203 endorsing the urban enterprise zone assistance fund project entitled Main and Washington Avenue Demolition Project, Phase 2, in the amount of $57,000.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala.
Yes.
Kamala.
Yes.
Bartclay.
Yes.
Oldeste.
Yes.
Bettis.
Yes.
Swetson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 204 authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with Keyshav Real Estate Development LLC regarding the expanded city-city area redevelopment plan, Block 102, Lots 5, 12, 26, 27, 28, 10, and 24, and the execution of a purchase and sell agreement for Block 102, Lots 10, and 24.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala.
Yes.
Kamala.
Yes.
Bartclay.
Yes.
Oldeste.
Yes.
Bettis.
Yes.
Swetson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 205 authorizing the lease and installation of holiday decorations from Christmas decor in New Jersey.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Who first, if Bettis or Kamala? Well, listen, I'm going to two people at the same time. I thought you were second, somebody. Very good. May I have a president? May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Kamala.
Yes.
Kamala.
Yes.
Bartclay.
Yes.
Oldeste.
Yes.
Bettis.
Yes.
Swetson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 206 authorizing the renewal of SDL Management Software License.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala.
Yes.
Kamala.
Yes.
Bartclay.
Yes.
Oldeste.
Yes.
Bettis.
Yes.
Swetson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 207, 207, authorizing the renewal of four-running software license.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala.
Yes.
Kamala.
Yes.
Bartclay.
Yes.
Oldeste.
Yes.
Bettis.
Yes.
Swetson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 208, an add-on authorizing a personnel transaction which is approved and a title change from battalion chief to firefighter for David Brech effective November 30th, 2015.
May I have a motion?
Motion. Sorry.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Oldeste.
Kamala.
Kamala.
Roll call.
Kamala.
Yes.
Kamala.
Yes.
Bartclay.
Yes.
Oldeste.
Yes.
Bettis.
Yes.
Swetson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Need a motion to approve the bill, let's.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala. I mean, Kamala.
Yes.
Kamala.
Yes.
Bartclay.
Yes.
Oldeste.
Yes.
Bettis.
Yes, abstaining on 03020, uh, Page 2, Item 1.
And that's 03?
03020.
20, so no, maybe. Swetson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion approved. I need a motion to approve bingo license.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kamala.
Yes.
Kamala.
Yes.
Bartclay.
Yes.
Oldeste.
Yes.
Bettis.
Yes.
Swetson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, we want comments. Mayor, you have anything?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, say congratulations to the firefighter, our new recruits, and also to say a prayer for our city. We've experienced a lot of sadness in the past couple of weeks. We ask, ask prayers for the families of Cliff and Larry. On a happy note, everybody that hasn't seen the fence, you might buy the fence at the park. The fence is really, really nice. Happy to be here.
Councilor, you have anything?
But John, I guess councilwoman did. Let me bring that back. Got it, okay.
Go ahead. Councilor, Oldeste.
To Mr. Laws, we spoke earlier. I want to speak in reference to the H-back system for the fire department and for the grant.
So the grant was approved almost a year ago. It's going through its last phase now. That is being, we're sending the state back the proposals on the project. And once those are approved, we can afford it, that's right.
So things are moving pretty fast, Mayor.
Then, Councilor, Oldeste.
Yeah, that's it. My interest.
Yeah.
Councilor Bell?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. I just want to announce that the city in partnership with American Legion, Coast Guard 1, and the ZOI unit of that coast, as well as participation of our junior ROTC at the Fuddell High School, will be holding the annual Reverend's Day program on the 11th day of this month at 11:00 a.m. And everyone is invited to the program. It's going to be a little shorter this year. We don't have a long speaker. It'll probably be me along the speaker, but, uh, and we'll have some light refreshments after the ceremony. So everyone's invited. Appreciate the continued support of the mayor's office and the city, particularly coffeeports. And I have one other item. Resolution 201, not to have a problem with the resolution, but that's the one that we charge for taking care of abandoned property, etc. Don't we have ordinance that authorizes us to do that? I'm quite sure we do.
Yes.
We've been doing it for years.
Yeah, it's late on.
But I don't know why we need resolution and have ordinance, but I just want to make sure.
I, I, if you're looking at me, I detract the ordinance and I somewhat agree with what you're saying.
Yeah.
Excuse me, the resolution. We have an ordinance. The ordinance already gives the authority to charge them back. However, there may have been specific properties that they wanted to charge back, and then there should be an ordinance. If Mrs. Jones at 123 Woodland Avenue has chipped, you know, sidewalk or something like that, and she's been noticed, or she's got debris in her yard and her grass is eight feet tall, and someone says, well, we're going to, you're going to have to cut it. We're giving her summonses, or we're going to come in and do it. Then I think that that's when the resolution is warranted, because now you're asking specifically.
That's the 10-page.
Well, right, you just, you put her on notice, right? And then if the city did the work, I don't know what the origin is of this particular one. If it's dealing with properties and they just don't want to put the property addresses on here?
Maybe you could.
Yes.
Well, there is to the, uh, medical attorneys, correct? There is an ordinance for that. This is pertaining to the work of the tax collector to actually charge the properties of the tax sale. So the resolutions that you're dealing with, from Resolution 197 all the way up into, uh, what resolution is that, 201? These are allowing her to do the items needed for the tax sale.
But she should be able to just like.
Well, what happened when we implemented the future systems to do the billing, we started billing them as the work was being done. So some of the property owners do actually pay beforehand. This allows her, for those who don't pay within a year, for it to be added to the tax sale or a lien. That's the problem.
So this is really.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because there's the lien, and then there's the re, the charge.
Yeah, so, so the ordinance is implemented as it relates to the work and the charges to the work. And then public works is actually charging the property owners. And if they don't pay before the tax sale comes, then this allows her to actually put it as a lien. So it's clean and lien. Now, before, we used to do resolutions privately. We're listing all the properties. But then this new system implemented charging. So we were charged as the work got done. Yeah. And then the final resolution.
Over 10,000, 12,600.
Yes, according to, that's what it says with the explanation, yes. 6%, not to exceed 6%. And that's the explanation for Resolution 200, yes.
Thank you.
Your vote, sir.
Anyone else? Anyone else have anything? I just want to add that we have a family that has been displaced due to, um, a fire on October 28th. And there's an organization called Angels in Motion. They are taking donations for this family. It's a family of 10 that has been displaced.